In the city, Taste of Falls Church, run for the schools and a lot of great events. The city staff, I think, did an awesome job over this weekend in taking care of all the crowds and the activities. It was, I think, a great weekend here in Falls Church. So, thank you. So, our first item, I think, is not on the agenda, which is a brief update about the George Mason High School and the construction that's going on up there. Dr. Noonan, welcome, and thank you for coming out. We appreciate it. What's going on?
Appreciate you having me.
Yeah.
I'm hoping to make this as short a presentation as possible. So, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, City Manager Shields. A pleasure to see you all tonight. On Friday of last week, we had a budget and finance meeting, and Mr. Lichtenhouse and Vice Mayor Connolly were at the meeting, as well as the rest of the members of the Budget Finance Committee. And it was suggested that perhaps we come and share some news with you about where we are with the high school project. And I'm pleased to report that we are, we're moving right along. If you haven't had a chance to get by the high school in the last several weeks, we are making significant progress, and I'll talk about that in just a second. But first, I wanted to, in front of you, just call your attention to this monthly report that I put in front of you. It's a front and back. We receive these once a month, and we post them on our website. And this is the August monthly report from Gilbane. It's a lagging, a lagging piece of information, insofar as we're sort of about three weeks ahead of what's in this document. But I think in the interim, it's a good piece to kind of look at. And so, just to orient you to it quickly, the left-hand side has the project status. So there, you'll see some of the major milestones that have been accomplished in the month of August, starting with the submission of GMP 2, which is the Greatest Maximum Price Document to us for review. Gilbane has excavated over 50,000 cubic yards of soil from our building site there. And the good news is, is that the 50,000 cubic yards or the 5,000 truckloads of dirt that came out of there, while not really great for compaction, didn't leave us with any issues. There was no need to undercut. There was no need to go with deeper foundations. And when we get down to soil that's worthy of building on, we felt really good. And so, the fact that we have excavated that much dirt, not had to do a whole lot of undercutting, in many ways, sort of mitigated quite a bit of the risk of the project that we were quite worried about, sort of going in. You'll also see in here that there is some temporary utility routing. And for those of you that had a chance to go along Route 7 in front of Mary Ellen Henderson, for about two months, they were digging out to put in the duck bank there. That's completed at this point, or at least behind the Gilbane fence, which is good. And they have started the concrete foundation work. And actually, it's gone beyond the concrete foundation work that they've done. They've poured a significant number of the exterior footings, and they're starting to pour the footings down the middle of the site as well. But at the same time, they're also forming up and pouring walls. And so, as you go by the site, one of the things you'll see is you'll actually see some of the foundational walls that have gone up. And Gilbane is working at about 160 linear feet of foundation wall per week, which is not insignificant. So, we anticipate, over the course of the next month, month and a half, that all of the exterior walls will be poured, the mat footing and mat slab will be poured, and we'll start getting steel in the hole. So, we're really excited to start seeing some steel in the air as early as mid to late October, but certainly, we'll be out of the ground at that point before the winter comes, which is a really good thing for us. Here, you'll see also in this project status, some of the current work that's happening and some upcoming milestones. Wanted to call your attention to one in particular that is significant to us, and that is that tomorrow night, the school board will be adopting the Greatest Maximum Price 2, which is an amendment to our GMP 1, which we did, that will carry us through to the completion of the project. So, you may remember in GMP 1, there were some things like site work, foundations, geothermal, some steel, some concrete, roofing, elevator, some MEP, mechanical, electrical plumbing, fire protection, permit fees, and some general conditions, bonds, and insurance. And everything else now will be taken care of as part of our Greatest Maximum Price Document tomorrow night that the school board will sign, or we anticipate that they'll sign. The great, the really great news about GMP 2 is that it's coming in right on budget. And so, we anticipate that at the end of tomorrow night, when we sign our Greatest Maximum Price Document, we will be within the budget that has been established for this project. And right now, we are on schedule to take, to take occupancy of the building in the December 2020 timeline, which we anticipate. So, we are looking at moving the old George Mason into the new George Mason over the winter break next year. So, in about a year and two and a half months or so, we should be moving into the new building, and are really excited about that. Going back to this monthly report, on the right-hand side, you'll see some narratives around what's happening. And at the bottom, you'll see two things. One is a timeline, and you'll note that the yellow is kind of where we are between groundbreaking and steel topping out. And again, they expect the steel topping out in the 2020 timeline. Then we move into the enclosure, and then the target date for the finish is that December 2020. Underneath, there are some older pictures, which will lead me in just a second to the last thing I'll share with you before I move on for the night. But if you flip over, you'll also see just a very, very high-level schedule to give you a sense of where we anticipate being in terms of excavation, structure, enclosures, interior, field, and final site work. As I look at this Gantt chart on the backside, one of the things that's sort of striking to me is we're nearly halfway through the project from when we started through the RFP process, RFQ process, to the completion. And that's very exciting, but also very nerve-wracking to think that we've been moving at such breakneck speed. But we are really, really excited about where we are in this project. So, if you don't mind, I'd like to just share one last piece of information with you, and it relates to the website that we have up here. So, thank you, Ms. Mester, for letting me drive. First is, I just want to make sure that everyone in here and whoever may be watching at home, where we do have this website that's been up since the very first meeting that we held, has information not only about sort of the most recent project conversations we've had. So, for example, on August 22nd, we had a GMP 2 information update with the school board. And here is that segment of the videotape from the meeting. But we also have all of the ASAC meetings, which is the Architectural Selection Advisory Committee meetings. We've had three of those. That's the team that's helping us with some of the finishes, colors, and the information about the new traffic flow. And then here, you'll see sort of those monthly reports that I was referencing tonight are here as well. They're downloaded, and they're easy to get to. That's on the splash page of the website. On the left-hand side, you'll see some other repository spaces. You'll see the Campus Coordinating Committee, now that that is complete, but some of the work that was done there, some overview, our big Q and A. But the one piece that I wanted to call your attention to that's really exciting, it's not going to be really exciting tonight because it's dark, but we did, we did put up two Nest cams on Mary Ellen Henderson. So, we are streaming live instruction site. So, if you ever are at your desk and you want just kind of an overview of what's happening, this is where you would go. And it's not loading, of course.
Maybe it's just nighttime, and you can't see anything.
Yeah, right, right. It's a very gray night out on our site, quite foggy. Yeah, but it's, yes, that is true. This is disappointing. You may not be able to see them, but...
Is this the grand finale?
Yeah, I'm sorry to say. It's sort of a dud here.
You were doing so well beforehand, on time and on budget. You had us on, on time and on budget, so...
Yeah. Anyhow, perhaps I can show you on my phone, or you can just go to the website on your phone.
Drive there on the way back tonight.
Yeah, there you go. But anyway, everywhere else in the world, except this room tonight, you can see the live stream of the, of the construction that's going up. And as you're looking at it, just to kind of orient you, as you look down, you'll see on the right-hand side, which is the east side of the excavation, is where the foundation walls are going up. Just to give you some sense of what's going to be there, that's the beginning of the arc swing. So, you see the band room, the chorus room beginnings. And then, as you work west, you get into the locker rooms, the PE areas, and the like. And so, quite excited about, quite excited about that. So, I'm going to end there and just ask if you have any questions. I'd be happy to answer them. If you don't have any questions, I'm happy to move along, as I know you've got a busy night tonight. And as you ask, I'm going to give this one more shot.
All right. Well, why are you doing that? I think we wanted to just give you our congratulations to being on time and on budget and your execution to date. Sounds like it's right on target, so that's great.
Yeah, we're, we're hoping to have some hard hat tours before the winter. So, if we can sort that out and make sure everybody has a hard hat, we'll get you in there if you want, just to kind of walk around. There are some limitations in terms of clothing that you have to wear and some safety gear, but otherwise, if we, if we do that, we'll let you know.
Okay, that sounds great. Are there any questions, or shall we, one, Ms. Hardy?
Yeah, I echo the congratulations. Great news. Having experienced Back to School Night at MEH myself, I think the parking situation's working fine. I think the schools, you all have done a good job communicating the need to carpool and take alternative means, but I wanted to check on how that's going, because I've certainly been parroting what you've said, that we still have 400 parking spaces throughout the construction period, which is actually more than I think we might have had before, but they're in different places. But I sense that there's some probably angst in the community, so I just wanted to see how that was going.
Yeah, thank you. It's a great question, and one that we've sort of been, you know, plans are 10% initiation and 90% execution. And I think when we were able to get schools started, we, we feel like we've been able to manage the traffic really well. Those 400 spaces do actually, as you mentioned, Ms. Hardy, exceed what we had. And I think people are settling into the routines at this point and are making the drives in, in the directions and through the paths that we expected. One thing that we are continuing to monitor is the use of the parking spaces. We're finding that the senior lot on Haycock Road, for example, is, it's not fallow, but it's certainly not filled every day. So, the possibility may be out there in the not-too-distant future to offer up some more spaces. I know we did limit this year. We only offered to seniors, but we may be able to open it up to juniors now, which is good. And then, the parking for overflow and the like, we actually haven't really hit the spots that go down towards the old softball field very much at all. So, we are finding that we have sufficient parking for everyone there, and by and large, everybody's, everybody's figured it out, and we feel really good about it. Thank you for asking.
All right. Any other questions?
No, I just want to thank you guys for building confidence in the community, for bringing our single largest project so far, many miles to go, but on time and on budget. And I know your team and the school board and others have worked really hard, so it's just, it's great to see. Thank you, guests.
Thank you. We're really, really happy with the project. And when we signed this GMP, what we've said to people is we're not getting a Bugatti or a Ferrari, but we're getting, and we're not getting a Pinto, but we're getting a really great, state-of-the-art high school that's going to serve our needs for the next 30 years plus.
All right. Well, unless there's anything else, thank you again for the update. Congratulations once again on the progress to date. We look forward to further updates and further cooperation between our two bodies, so thanks again. All right, why don't we move on to the next item, which is our Comp Plan Amendment on Natural Resources, Environmental Sustainability, and the like. Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mary Carter. Members of council, Kate Walker is our staff lead on developing our update to the Natural Resources and Environment Chapter of the Comprehensive Plan. Sort of the big areas of policy that we're wrestling with in this chapter relate to climate and air, stormwater streams and natural springs, urban forest and biodiversity, consumption and waste, and community engagement. Those are sort of the big areas of focus in this plan, and Kate's been working very hard with the community to develop this plan. So, I'll turn the staff report over to her.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Kate Walker, the city's environmental programs coordinator, just in case anyone doesn't know. That's not my presentation. That's the chapter itself. So, it's the second 0202. I have a lot of slides in here about why we update a comprehensive plan. I know that you're pushed for time, so if you'd like me to skip over that, I'm happy to do that. I know that you probably all know this by now. You've seen it through the housing and demographics chapters. So, just, you know, what is the comprehensive plan? It's not overarching vision. It guides us. We're reviewing our comprehensive plan, chapter by chapter, rather than trying to do it all at once. The important thing is, though, that it is a policy guide for the future, and it does inform the budgeting process. So, my hope is that stuff that is in the comprehensive plan, as the, that the community wants to do, I can then come to you and say, "The community really wants us to do this," and you can look at the budget and, and tell us whether we can. So, it's important that we identify the right things to do and that we prioritize them correctly. That's really what I would like to get from you this evening. Developing the draft, you know, Wyatt said, "I'm taking the lead," and that's true, but the planning department has put in an enormous amount of work on this too. And the Department of Public Works staff have also had significant inputs to this chapter. This is not an individual effort where I'm gathering everyone's information. This is a real team effort, and I very much appreciate the assistance of the other staff and their work on the team, too. So, why would we update the chapter? Well, Chapter 5, the previous Natural Resources and Environment Chapter, was written in 2005, and it's a great thing of its kind. It contains long narrative descriptions of natural resources in the city. And its focus was on protecting, preserving, and restoring what we already had. I think we need a new line of sight now. Things are changing rapidly in the city, and in this redraft, what I've tried to do is look at how we can adapt to the changes that are happening. So, just to, you're very aware, I'm sure, of the changes that are happening, but our population is increasing, and that's going to have a big effect on our natural resources and environment. Redevelopment is occurring not only in the commercial areas, where it's very obvious, but also in residential areas, where there are still 2,000 houses who, that are valued at less than the price of the lot. So, that makes them possible candidates for redevelopment. So, there's a lot of room for redevelopment, both on residential and commercial areas. And then, of course, climate change. The graphs show predictions for the number of days per year with maximum temperature at or above 100, at or above 95, at or above 90. These are temperatures where it becomes really risky, especially for our vulnerable populations. And of course, I don't think I need to tell any of you that when it rains, it can rain really hard. July the 8th showed us what can happen. And the predictions of climate scientists, of course, have a lot of variability in the prediction, but they are generally to a trend for more hotter days and more extreme weather events. And those are things that we need to be able to manage. So, if the message of 2005 about natural resources was that we don't lose it, the message for 2019 isn't just, "Don't lose it," it's also, "Use it." A tree is a beautiful thing, and it's worth preserving for its own sake, but it's also a stormwater management tool that slows down the speed at which water hits the ground, that filters it, that pumps water back up into the air. Trees have so many environmental benefits. It's not just their beauty that makes them worth preserving. We need more. So, looking at this vision statement, the concept is that we want to increase the resiliency and environmental sustainability of the city by protecting, enhancing, and expanding its natural resources, increasing the use of green infrastructure, reducing consumption and waste of both energy and materials, and using the latest building techniques to minimize environmental impacts and enhance community quality of life. It doesn't look very visionary, but if you look at the other chapters, it's not like the city vision, where you were creating a picture of what the city should be in the future. This is more about where are we headed? Where do we want to be headed with the things that we're doing? As Wyatt mentioned, the goal areas that we identified primarily through the community meeting and with, in meetings with you earlier, are climate and air, stormwater, streams and natural springs, urban forest and biodiversity, consumption and waste, and community. Consumption and waste was previously in the utilities chapter of the comprehensive plan, but I haven't met anyone who thought that it didn't belong in the environment So, for each of those areas, we've written goal statements that explain what it is we want to do. You have them in the handout before you, so it might be easier for you to read them there. And the narrative in this chapter evaluates what the existing policies and programs are, considers the impact of the changing trends that we, that I talked about in the beginning, population development and climate change, and then considers what additional actions, programs, and projects are needed. Now, at the end, you'll find, well, at the end of each section, there are strategies, which are general approaches to carrying out the goals. And then, at the end, I think probably one of the key things here is these tables of all the policy actions and programs that have been suggested. This is not filtered. This is an unfiltered list of all the things that our community has said that they want us to do. Some of these are from boards and commissions. Some of them are from individual community members. Some of them may have been from earlier suggestions that you have made. And the question is, do you agree with the prioritization, the short timeframe? We're talking perhaps in the next couple of years, a medium timeframe in the next four years, and a long timeframe in six years. Now, those timeframes are not set. If the money, if a grant suddenly became available to do a long-range plan right now, and we had the SAF resources to do it, that might be something that we would want to do and come to you and ask if that's what you want us to do. There are a few specific ones that have to be done right now. The Stormwater Management Plan, the update of the Stormwater Ordinance, and the Solid Waste Management Plan must be done by law in the next year. So, that's why those are identified as short-term with an asterisk, is because we don't have a choice. I did separate the proposed activities into policy actions and programs and projects. Sometimes, that separation is a bit artificial, but it's just, it makes it a little bit easier to think about. I know I've gone through that very quickly, but I'm thinking that you have probably read the document and have some comments ready, so I don't want to waste your time talking about it, if you'd like to go ahead and make remarks.
All right. Well, listen, thank you very much for all the good work you've put in on this and other projects in the city. We know that a lot goes into something like this. I may start, actually, with Mr. Z, who I think's had some involvement as well on this. Do you have anything maybe you want to say before we get started?
Well, I, I think that what we have in front of us as a draft is much improved from all the earlier additions, and Kate's fingerprint is, is quite visible and appreciated. I do agree that the, the two big things that we need to look at in the, in the coming season with regard to not only budget, but our goals for the community would be focused on stormwater and all the things that are tended to that, as well as solid waste. Those are very important. Also, to remind all of us here that, you know, the goal set forth by Cog in the region is that, and also reflecting what was stated in the Paris Accords, that 2050 is a watershed year. It's an important period of time where we're supposed to actually be doing stuff. And we can't wait until 2030, 2035, 2040 to realize we only have 10 years left to do it. And in fact, Cog is setting forth this fall to gather a regional task force to get general broad agreement on what things can be done with all the memberships and have them subscribe to it. So, this document will also be subject to lots more discussion this coming Wednesday and Thursday before the Urban Forestry Commission and also the Environmental Sustainability Council. So, I look forward to seeing their comments as well. But I have to say, it's vastly improved from earlier versions.
Thank you, Mr. Z.
Okay, other questions? Ms. Hardy?
Thank you, Kate. I read the red line, and I could see how extensive the rewriting of this is. So, thank you for all the hard work. I know that it probably took a lot of time and effort. So, I had a couple of broad questions and then some more specific comments. So, as I look at all the different things we could do, much like the housing chapter, there is no shortage of work, and clearly, all important to do. A broader question I have probably for you and Wyatt is, are we staffed and budgeted to do all the important things? And if not, how big of a gap do we think we're looking for? And this is probably a four-month-from-now kind of discussion, but as I look at all these things, they all seem important to me. But clearly, we can't do all of them, even in that short 20 to 22 timeframe that's identified. Because that would be one broad concern I have, is how do we go after all of this stuff? And you don't have to answer that now. Second is, I agree with Dan's comment, that I think stormwater is clearly an important thing to go after. I would also propose adding, I think this is under, I'm looking at the charts towards the end, under policies, 11, 12, and 14 all have to do with residential redevelopment. And I think we've all seen all the data that points that we actually disturb far more acreage of land every year with residential redevelopment than we do with commercial, and we pay a lot of attention to commercial. So, to the extent that we can actually address our zoning regulations, our requirement around tree canopy, replacement tree protection, setbacks, water retention on-site, whatever those different, I guess, parameters are, let's make sure we are being as stringent as possible with residential redevelopment. So, I would, I think currently, you have all those emphasized under medium term. But again, when I look at the data, I feel like there's an opportunity there for us to actually address residential redevelopment. And then, the third thing I just want to point out is Green Fleet. I think it's really important for us to think about leading by example. So, as we talk about encouraging our residents to move to EV vehicles and putting charging stations up, I know we go through vehicle upgrades all the time, and we probably go through that cost-benefit analysis of, does it make sense for actually to upgrade those vehicles to EV ones earlier than, later? But that might be one that we should be considering, actually, along the way and not just push off further on the horizon. So, those are broader questions. Some more specific ones, waste reduction. So, I know that the recycling markets are kind of a mess right now. And I know inside the chapter, we talk about kind of where the glass program is heading, especially in Fairfax, and I think Alexandria and Arlington are moving to those big purple bins. So, in the near term, does staff have a recommendation on what to do? That feels like something that could be pretty actionable, especially if we think that, if we let residents know that actually all their glass that's put in recycling right now, and single-stream recycling is actually going to landfill, people would probably be pretty shocked. And I know that we have to be pretty careful about what to do about recycling, but that's something that feels like a good near-term thing that we could go and solve. Likewise, in waste reduction, business composting. I know that our residential composting program is really popular right now, and that's a good thing. If we can roll out to our business community, I think there could be a good opportunity there. And then, finally, the last comment I have is around tree canopy. I know that right now, we're at 46%. I'm always a big fan of having measurable goals. And so, I think in this chapter, we talk about actually getting to 50%. I'd like to know what that looks like. Is it planting double the amount of street trees? Is it requiring a certain amount of tree canopy in certain projects? How do we actually get to a 50% goal? How realistic that is? Is that 50% in 10 years, in five years? Tell me kind of figure out what that means in terms of action and strategy. And I lied. Actually, I have one very last comment, somewhat related to environment, and I mentioned this to Kate and Wyatt offline, is the use of Roundup. So, a citizen actually brought this concern to me, so I can't take credit for it, but I think everyone has seen a lot of the data, that it's a probable human carcinogen. It's banned in many parts of Europe. I know we use it very, very limitedly in the city, but I'd like to think about whether this is something that we should consider banning altogether. I think Charlottesville is the first city in Virginia that has actually banned it altogether. If there's other alternatives, like mechanical means of removal, I'd like us to consider that. So, or at least limit the use of it in schools, our parks, or public property. Something related to add to the list. Thank you.
Okay, who's next? Any other comments on this? Mr. Snyder?
Thanks a lot for a lot of good work here. So, I will say that it's disappointing to me that the Council of Governments has not been stronger on the... been stronger on the whole that air quality standard versus air quality standard. And certainly advocating that we get tougher on that, because those things will have an effect in the next five to 10 years, whether it's the participation of the state agencies or what. But it's very disappointing to me. I wanted to make that general comment since the issue of COG came up, and we'll continue to work to try to get COG more engaged. If you look at charts that compare the air quality today versus 20 years ago, we made substantial demonstrable improvement. And the possibility that we'd actually be reversing that is absolutely intolerable. So you can bet you have my commitment to push that as hard as I possibly can, and I know I've worked with you under these COG committees. And it's also true of water quality and methane standard and just on and on. So I wanted to lay that mark down first. The second thing is, I think it's very important to reach out to single-family homeowners across the city. My experience has been that, that what looks good on paper suddenly runs into surprising opposition that can be dealt with, keeping people new what the standards were going to be, and had an opportunity to work with them accordingly. I've heard from a number of single-family homeowners who tried to do some things, and the process to get approval, they found absolutely, they wanted to do the right thing, and yet the process took them weeks and months to go through, and I'm talking way, way back to some folks over on Shadow Walk in that part of the city. The, it really is, I think, we want to make sure that we're engaged in the whole community. I also note that it seems that certain things have a momentum on their own, even though there was significant discussion with a lot of questions. Number nine, for example, that we had a very thorough discussion, and yet it appears here. I'm not sure that the council has said this is something we want to do, so I'm not sure I know why it's on there, as though it were given. So these are the kinds of things that I wanted to raise, even as I support the general approach here. We have to be careful that we engage and we get the support of all elements of the community, those who are environmentally connected and those who may not be, that are simply problematic or severe effects.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Littenhouse?
Thanks, Kate. A couple of things that I was pleased to see in here and things that, just from a personal standpoint, that I'd be interested in pursuing from a practical perspective and functional perspective as we move down the path of putting some of this in action, and then they all tie back together. One, restoring our streams through daylighting, I've said this before, but I think Herman Valley Stream Park is one of the best green amenities that we have in this city. More opportunities for us to marry that with some of the other things that we talk about in other parts of the comprehensive plan, such as walkability and just general beautification of Falls Church, and one of the things that makes it an attractive place for both residents and businesses, I think can be achieved and really accomplish kind of, you know, twofold, right? So you've accomplished something within this chapter, the comprehensive plan, but we've also checked a box on doing something that is really a green amenity in the city. So something I was pleased to see. Urban agriculture, I can't speak highly enough of that. I think it checks the box both in terms of overall benefit from an environmental sustainability perspective, an educational perspective, a green amenity perspective, and then, as with all things, when you want to get people excited about an idea, when you want to move people to change, you got to do something to impassion them. And doing things that are unique, like urban agriculture, doing things like, you know, stream restoration that people can see, they can touch, they can feel, that's more than just system changes inside of a commercial building to achieve LEED certification, are the kind of things that I think speak very strongly to the Falls Church community and would get people excited to help accomplish some of these things that take it from kind of codified aspiration into practical application on the street. The third thing, and we've touched on this before, enforcement of stormwater retention on residential development. There was a conversation, and I cannot recall when this was, several weeks ago, it may have been an council work session, it may have been in a board or committee meeting, just in terms of our alignment with state requirements and other requirements where we may not be quite as stringent in our management of that. I do echo Councilman Snyder's comments that there are a lot of folks that, call it off-the-grid from these types of conversations, that may react to some of these changes on the residential front more than others, so I think that this is something that should be socialized. But I do feel that stormwater retention and making sure that we are applying those regulations on-site is something that we should probably look more into, just to make sure that we are up to par. And then just one question for you, Kate, just in terms of the current chapter, which is dated in 2005, where does our current chapter, as amended, what you guys are recommending, how does that compare to some of the other neighboring jurisdictions?
Well, we looked at neighboring jurisdictions, like plans in order to develop this one, but this is a plan tailored specifically for Falls Church, really. I mean, it uses, obviously, the COG air report, it used the COG stormwater statements, it uses the climate and energy action plan goals. One of the unique things about the city, I think, is this process of developing the comp plan chapter by chapter. So Alexandria, for example, and the city of Fairfax have both done their whole plan all at once. I think this process gives us a much better opportunity to determine what we really want to do and to set the right priorities and perspective on the projects that we're identifying.
Mr. Duncan?
Thank you. The idea that I would like to socialize, good words there by all my colleagues, but that idea particularly is encapsulated on page four of the document, where the data show that 129 single-family homes have been constructed in the past four years, affecting an estimated five and a half acres of land. An estimated 2,000 homes in the city are worth less than the land on which they're located, a situation that provides an incentive for redevelopment. So I think everybody sort of knows this, but, you know, we are just getting started in transforming Falls Church to be whatever it's going to be when it grows up. And as others have said here, I think we're going to need to put a much heavier hand on the scale as residential redevelopment proceeds to make sure that it meets the standards and accomplishes the goals that commercial redevelopment already achieves, because when a big commercial development is done, we have requirements about retention and quality of stormwater runoff that are not as rigorously applied to residential redevelopment. So budgetarily, staff-wise, I would love for us to begin having a conversation as early as possible about what's going to be required on the city side to enable us to make sure residential redevelopment occurs in a way that harmonizes with our environmental goals. The second question is really just a semantic one. I noticed in listening to folks talk about this issue area, that the phrase that is recurring now is not climate change, but climate instability. And I'm just wondering, are we, are we at the cusp of a shift? I mean, it used to be global warming, and then we had to explain that, well, that also means, you know, extreme cold, too. And just as we memorialize, you know, this very important and well-written document, I want to make sure that we're up to the very latest on it. Climate instability sort of speaks to the experience that we have, you know, where we have extreme hot and extreme cold and, you know, rain events that are like nothing we've ever seen before. Anyway, I'm just wondering, those of you who are experts in this area, is climate change still the way to talk about this as we go out in the community, or is climate the new better buzzword?
I think that matches well with a point made by Ed Salzberg, who contributed to the planning committee comment, planning commission comment, sorry, that we could still have a stronger emphasis within the chapter on climate resilience, and it's resilience, your ability to cope with and adapt to and recover from climate change that perhaps need a bit more emphasis.
Okay, great. Glad you all talked about it. Okay, thanks.
Okay, just a couple of points from me. One, Dan, thank you for your leadership and flying the Falls Church flag at COG and VML state-wise, we appreciate that. A few thoughts, there's, you know, fair amount of discussion about Howard Herman, you know, stream bed alike, not so much about Four Mile Run, which I think is sort of, I wouldn't call it a sleeper, but something that I think probably deserves more attention from, by us and as a community, and ways we can restore and improve that community asset. I also believe that residential runoff is an issue that I think we need to be paying more attention to, and I'm not sure how we get our arms around it, but it seems like we're, people are in technical compliance with our regulations, but nonetheless, they're causing problems for the neighbors. I mean, I hear about it regularly, I heard about it yesterday, someone who had a brand-new house built next to them, and they've got a stream of water coming in. And I don't know whether our regulations allow someone to meet the same flow or runoff as they did previously, but we're not paying attention to how it's directed or something. But there seems to be some kind of missing link with residential redevelopment that is allowing flooding problems to be exacerbated for neighbors and other people in the community. And that's just anecdotal. I don't have hard empirical data, but I heard, I think most of us, all of us have heard from enough people to believe that there really is some fire to the smoke we're seeing. And so I would ask that maybe there, a little more emphasis be placed on that, both in this document, but just actually beyond that, in ways we can attempt to regulate stormwater runoff more effectively, so that it may not just be the total quantity that comes from a neighboring property, but where the quantity goes, which seems to be the problems that I'm hearing about. You know, everything was great before, this new house came in, and now, whatever, my basement's flooding, my yard's flooding, or whatever it might be. So I would also agree, I've heard from the same person about Roundup, which I agree with, Roundup, other pesticides on city property. I think that just because something's allowed by law doesn't mean it should be used, and in some ways, maybe our country's behind regulating some of the pesticides and other things that are in our environment. And so I think we can be progressive and forward-looking in how we as a community, but particularly we as a government, use chemicals and pesticides on public lands. And so I think that's something that we ought to be considering. You know, I don't know how it fits into this document, but just a more overarching comment that we ought to be reevaluating what kind of things we put in our land. We've got kids all over the place in this community, and so to me, that is something we ought to be thinking long and hard about, what kind of, you know, whether it's Roundup or some other chemical or pesticides, what we use and other alternatives that we could be using. I also would like to see more street trees. I don't know how and where that goes, but I just think they're so nice and they add value in so many ways to a community that we ought to be looking for ways to improve that. And echoing the comments as well about stormwater runoff, intersects so many issues here. It's not just the environment, but it's also property values, it's public health, public safety, and so I think this is another way to capture that concern and try to address it through this document. So I think it's all I've got, unless anybody's got anything else, when we wrap up this discussion and move on to the next step. Thanks again for your great work.
Thank you.
We greatly appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments.
Yeah. Let's move on to our next item, which is the FY 2019 year-end financial report.
So Ms. Bawa, she was at the table. We gave this presentation to President Ryan, I'm sorry, all through the numbers. The bottom line is, I did want to base the, the financial report is positive.
Does it have a pointer? That's all, Mayor, it's a green one? Just pointing. It doesn't look on the TV, so you'd have to mouse for it.
And so we have a revenue surplus, we have year-over-year increases in revenues as well. Sales tax and meals taxes in particular have been exceeding our projections. And a lot of that is due to policy choices that the council has made to try to grow our commercial tax base. And so those are positive things we can report. On the spending side, the general government underspend its budget by about 0.6%, or just about $500,000, and that was an effort by managers across the city, knowing that we have capital challenges, to be very prudent in our use of funds and set those funds aside for our capital projects. Ultimately, the council would make the decision on that, but we wanted to create that opportunity for the council. So that's a couple of introductory comments. Your presentation is ready to go?
Ready to go.
All right, I'll turn it over to Ms. Bawa.
Good evening, Mayor Tarter and members of the council. We have for you the fiscal year 2019 financial results, which are preliminary and audited and are subject to change as we are going through the audit in the next month or two. And we'll take a quick look at the revenues and the spending and its impact on the fiscal year 2020 projections as part of the budget adoption that was done in April earlier this year. And additionally, we'll review the city's unfunded capital needs and the next steps. The next slide shows, Slide three, provides an overall summary of how we ended the last fiscal year 2019, with total revenues exceeding the budget by 1.9 million, which is 2.1% over the total budget, and roughly 6.2% over the previous year's actuals, the fiscal year 18. The expenditures show an underspending of roughly 550,000, which is 0.6 of the budget for fiscal year 19, and this was due to savings realized from staff turnover and vacancies and some planned savings in public works facilities, maintenance budget for City Health Project. On the revenues, I just want to give a quick one on the real property. The real property revenues came in 0.7%, the actuals over the budget, which was due to an increase, the tax rate increase that was done in fiscal year 19 of 2.5 cents, and also some taxes that were collected. Local taxes include, we will take a closer look on the local taxes in the next few slides. And licenses and permits saw an increase of 600,000 over budget due to the permits that we received, permit fees that we received over for large projects like Founders Row, City Hall, and high school, railroad coaches, and those kind of projects. The permit fees, which was 42.6% over budget and 59% over the last year's actuals, fiscal year 18. And these revenues were offset by lower-than-budget personal property taxes, which was 4.7% under budget in fiscal year 19 and 2% below the last year's actuals, due to less-than-projected increases in cars and a decrease in business tangible property valuation. We will take a quick, closer look at these local revenue taxes in a minute. Then, Slide number four, chart on Slide four shows general fund year-end performance for last 12 years, 2016 all the way down to 18 and 19. Most years, we have ended with savings, except fiscal year eight and through 10, as you will see the last major economic downturn when we were recovering from that. The red portion is the general government expenditure, the green portion is the school board transfers, the purple portion is the debt service, which, as you'll notice, has started increasing with our, since 2017, 18, 16 onwards with the capital projects, and the blue line is the operating revenues for each of those years. This chart provides a summary of the general government unassigned fund balance over a 15-year window. The green and the red lines show the floor and target of the current fiscal policy, the fund balance policy thresholds of 12% and 17%, the green being the floor and the red being the target. The unassigned fund balance is 16.2 million currently, which is 0.1% of the total expenditures, which is about the policy target. This would help address the anticipated increases in debt service in fiscal year 20, as we had modeled in our full CIP, with the upcoming debt issuance in fall. had modeled in our full CIP, with the upcoming debt issuance in fall. Slide number six. This shows a chart, a closer look of the five tax revenue indicators of local economic activity and represent roughly 25% of the city's revenues. Overall, fiscal year 19, you'll notice these local tax revenues outperformed budget by roughly 400,000, which was 1.7% over the target, the budget. If the fiscal year 19 actual trends sustain for most of these categories, the sales tax, meals and business license, we need a year-over-year growth of 0.3% at the bottom line, which is required to meet our fiscal year 20 budget target.
Let's see, if I could, just sorry to interrupt. Your bottom line shows a $423,000 difference, but it looks like those numbers show a $200,000 difference. Am I reading that wrong? Look at the bottom line across the two there and next door. Isn't that supposed to be the delta, 423?
Yeah.
Is that, am I reading it wrong, or is 423 the wrong number there?
One of those numbers might be incorrect. Sorry.
Okay, sorry to interrupt you. I just wasn't sure. I was looking at it correctly.
Good catch.
Yeah. Sorry.
And 0.3% increases, fairly modest increase that we need to achieve, easy to achieve over the next fiscal year, fiscal year 20. Let's take a quick closer look at each of those, the personal property tax. The, it shows increases, this, sorry, the budget versus actual for personal property tax over a 10-year window, the red line being the actuals collected and the blue line being the budget line. In fiscal year 19, the personal property taxes saw a decline of 2.1%, as, as you'll see in that green line there, over fiscal year 18. And this would require an increase of 5.2% to meet the fiscal year 20 target. At this point, it's unlikely we will meet that target. However, expect that we will see in the slide, have you noticed the increases in sales tax and meals tax and business license to meet those targets. We will bring our projections for personal property tax for fiscal year 20 in, as part of the first quarter update in late October. The low fiscal year 19 performance affects the average trends with three-year average at 5.7%, five-year average at 5.8%, and that brings the 10-year average to 5.6%. Slide eight shows the trends on the sales taxes over the same timeframe, 2011 to 19 actuals and 20, fiscal year 20 projected. Sales taxes were strong in fiscal year 19 with almost 9.9% over fiscal year 18 actuals. And if we collect at the same rate as fiscal year 19, we would more than meet the fiscal year 20 target. Brings the three-year average to 7.1%, improves five-year average 6.2% to 6.5% and seven-year average to 4.2%. The next slide shows the 10-year scenario of the meals taxes, which have also been better than budgeted. In fiscal year 19, meals taxes were 5.4% over fiscal year 18 actuals. And if we sustain those levels, we would exceed the fiscal year 20 target. The three-year being 6.6%, five-year average to 4.7% and a seven-year average to 4.1% for meals tax. Business license tax, the next slide, number 10. Fiscal year 19, business license taxes were almost 9% over the fiscal year 18 actuals, primarily due to increased construction activity, contracting services, and higher professional services and residential rental, the taxes we receive from those categories. This category, if you may recall, has struggled in the past couple of years. However, with these increased activities, if we collect at the same rate as fiscal year 19, we should be able to meet our fiscal year 20 target. The three-year average for business license is come up to 4.7%, five-year average to 5.1% and seven-year average to 4.7%. The last local indicator being the other taxes, which include transient occupancy tax, communication taxes, cigarette utility, and water. So this category overall has underperformed than budget in fiscal year 19, saw a decline of, year, decline of 4.7% and would need a 2.8% increase to be realized over the fiscal year 19 actuals to be, to meet the fiscal year 20 budget numbers. The low fiscal year 19 performance affects the short term with three-year average down to 1.5%, five-year average at 1.5% and 10-year average at 1.7% for this category. I do want to mention that recreation and probit taxes went up, however, were more than offset with lower cigarette taxes. Transient occupancy tax was down by 6%. Communication tax was down by 8%. Water and sewer was down by 14%. So overall, we need to monitor this and see if this is going to meet a trend for us in the, going forward in fiscal year 20. Slide 12 provides expenditure trends over a 10-year window. The red portion being the expenditures of the general government, the green portion is interjurisdictional agreements, the contracts that we pay for to Arlington and Fairfax. And purple portion on top being Walmart subsidy, which we see an increase over the last four-year window. The blue line represents the personnel expenditures, which have pretty much been stable, except for fiscal year 20, which as we had presented in the budget, increased due to the three termed positions for building inspectors and one police officer that we have. So Walmart subsidy and also the interjurisdictional agreement, the contracts, we have seen an increase in fiscal year 19 in those categories over the fiscal year 18 actuals. And the personnel expenditures remain pretty much same. And the next slide that brings us to 13 shows a breakdown of the salaries and benefits expenditures for citywide staff over a 10-year period. In fiscal year 19, salaries and benefits overall were slightly less than 18 as the retirement contribution rates decreased from 8.93% in fiscal year 19 to 4.36% in fiscal year 19 for basic. And the police follows pretty much the same trend. We also noticed lower health benefits over the last two-year window. So that is the portion you're seeing in green. I think that's, in 20, as I mentioned, we are seeing an increase in the salaries with the term positions for the building inspectors and the new police inspector, officer position that was added as part of the fiscal year 20 budget. Slide 14 shows a summary of the general government expenditures and the school transfers from 2011 onwards. General government expenditures have grown 29% and school transfer has grown roughly 52% from 2011 to 2020, 2020, current year budget. This has been a slide request that has come from council in the past. So revising our averages, which show the trends for transfer and seat enrollment and general government expenditures over three-year, five-year, seven-year and 10-year window. I'd like to mention that the five-year and seven-year averages are relatively higher because those were attempts to make up for the downturn that happened in fiscal year 10 and 11. And the last line is, shows the organic revenue growth, which is net of real estate tax increases. And in the short term, is, you'll see the three-years higher due to better investment earnings that we have seen in the last year or two. That continue even now. With 2.456 million surplus, there are potential uses of one-time funds for this include replenishing the permit reserve, the permit fee reserve, from which we used 350,000 as part of the fiscal year 20 budget for the inspectors and budgeted in fiscal year 2020. The multi-facility construction is projected, cost is 165,000, 275,000. City hall project budget, which will be brought, budget versus actuals will be brought to council in the next month or two. And we will also follow with the budget amendment that comes in fall, normally, usually in October. For any other requests that are included in the library renovation project funding gap is the next item on the work session agenda. As part of the next steps, we will bring the first quarter results of fiscal year 20 to council in October. And the fiscal year 2021 projections as part of the fiscal year 2021 budget development in November, December, along with joint board, school board and city council meeting in November, December. And we would seek council budget guidance for next year's budget development in December this year. Capital improvement program, the six-year number and four years additional, so a 10-year window capital improvement program is, would be considered and adopted in February, proposed, yeah, from planning commission. And in fiscal year 2021, proposed budget is expected to be, proposed budget, city manager's proposed budget is expected in March, March 9th, to be exact, of next year. That concludes my report. That opens up for any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you very much. You've done an awful lot of work and we greatly appreciate it. What questions might we have? Ms. Hardy?
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Bawa. So this is a really good news story, especially, I think, emphasizing what Wyatt said at the beginning, that our strategy to increase our commercial tax base is working. So we have sales tax at 11.5% over budget, which is amazing, probably not sustainable. Meals tax, 7.5%, all the stuff that we control that we care about a lot on this council, I think, is doing phenomenally well. So that's great. But I am always a glass half-empty kind of person, as you know. So I want to actually concentrate on the two places where we had some decreases, recognizing that we have great results and should be proud of that. On personal property, being almost 5% below budget. Do we have any understanding of where might that be coming from? Is it just people having less cars? Are they going greener and not buying as many cars? Or could it be an early sign of recession? Because I think in my former banking life, monitoring cars is always one of those first things. People are just more hesitant to make big purchases. So that's something I think we should definitely keep an eye on. Likewise, I think I heard you mention TOT was down 6%. So that's travel. That's another early indicator of recession, where people are less hesitant to go in business, travel or pleasure. Do we have any insight into those two data points?
So on personal property, we had budgeted a 3% increase over fiscal year 18 actuals. We saw an increase of the number of cars of 1%, so we did not meet that 3% target. We did see a much more robust increase in number of cars last fiscal year. And we are not able to maintain that. The bills have gone out for this year and we are not expecting that number to rise.
Is it across the city? Or do we think it's certain, is it, like, for example, are mixed-use buildings, where we think people might be more likely to use transit, they're buying less cars? Or is it across the city, we're just seeing people have less cars?
I think the, the, Kieran was getting to the, sort of, the main point of the reason for the decrease is on business tangible.
Right. So not, not personal property for cars.
Cars didn't grow as much as we thought. We, we budgeted a 3% increase in cars and it was only 1%. So it sort of flattened, but it didn't go down. Business tangible, what we are confirming with the commissioner of revenue is what we think is happening is that there were major investments in business tangible property with opening a lot of our major grocery stores, and they put those on a depreciation schedule. And so that's where the real decrease is coming from. Mr. Clinton, I think, is here in the room. He can elaborate on that, but I think that's what we're seeing.
And then TOT?
Trend in occupancy tax, last few months have, we have seen, not the whole year, as a drop, but the last few months. And I think I want to see, monitor that category for another two quarters to see if it's really a trend or if it was just a one-time fluctuation.
Okay. And my last question on the results, I think you've heard this from me enough times now. Clearly, the pie is getting bigger. Do we have a sense of, is everyone's share also getting bigger as well? Or is it just simply because we've added enough businesses that the pie's grown? Because I think one concern that we always hear from people is we've added so much competition, while overall city revenues are growing, individual businesses may not see that big of a jump. Do we have any insight into that this time around?
Are you talking sales tax?
Yes. Sales and meals.
Sales and meals. Well, that'll be something I will need to look into with the, I do not have a sense on the number of businesses, the change in fluctuation for each year. However, obviously, the total has increased and we have seen the quarter over quarter, the last quarter, we've seen a healthy growth in the months of May and June. However, need to see what, where the number of businesses versus whether it's quality or, or the quantity per, per business that's increasing or the overall number. We can get back to you on that one when we present the revenues as part of the next year's budget.
Okay.
And one other dimension to it that we need some more analysis on is the state is doing a much better job in collecting online sales taxes and remitting them to the jurisdictions where the computer screen is located. And we need to know to what extent that's driving the numbers as well, relative to your.
Okay. I imagine you, we're going to spend a lot more time on the discussion about what to do with the surplus? Or should I save my questions for that part of the discussion? Okay.
All right. Other comments or questions? Mr. Duncan?
Just one. Could you cycle back to 14, slide number 14, page 14? So general government over the past 10 years has increased 29%. And school transfer has increased 52%. I think it's time for a community-wide discussion about how we feel about that disparity. And, you know, with all the calls that we hear for the city side to do more, whether it's, you know, environmental measures, transportation measures, public safety measures, you name it. Is it sustainable for us to keep that difference between 29 and 52% and accomplish the things on the city side that we need to accomplish? I don't have an answer, but those numbers are, are pretty eye-catching, I think. What's the, the 10-year increase in the enrollment slide?
It's the.
Okay. There, well, you got, okay, 10 years. So enrollment on the school side has increased 3% over 10 years. What about the city's population over 10 years? I guess we don't officially know until we do the census next year, but has the city's population increased at a pace that matches or exceeds or is less than 3% student enrollment increase?
Yes, I think it's very similar to that number. We can get you the precise number.
Okay, so basically.
With that demographics report, we did do those 10-year looks.
Yeah, right. So basically, the population of the city has increased at roughly the same rate as the school enrollment. And yet, the expenditures on the school side have significantly outmatched the expenditures on the general government side.
My memory from those numbers is that the population rate of growth has been greater than the enrollment rate of growth, but let's confirm that.
Okay, all right. Okay, thanks. Okay, any other comments? If not, thank you, Ms. Bawa. I think this is good news. City, city continues strong economic growth, and I think a lot of the policies we've been promoting over these past years are coming to fruition. So, yeah, of course, Mr. Lichtenhouse.
So we're, we're coming up on our second anniversary of that Live Local initiative. Kieran, I would like to think that a lot of the effort by the chamber and the local businesses and folks here related to economic development contributed to that increase in sales and meals tax, and folks deciding to spend more of their hard-earned, hard-earned money inside the city limits. Do we have any indication as to the months of Do we have any indication as to, uh, the months of November, December of last year? Or what that, how that compared to the previous year?
I can certainly look into that.
Okay.
Right.
Because I would like to say, I, I do, I certainly wouldn't, um, I certainly wouldn't paint Live Local as being, and that initiative as being the sole contributor to that, but I do think it's important for our community to recognize when they look at these numbers, a seven hundred and eighty thousand dollar increase over budgeted amount for those two particular categories, uh, over that time period, um, there was a significant contribution to that initiative. And I think it's important for folks to understand the power of the dollar. And seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars is, you know, almost two cents, uh, on the tax rate. That's considerable when you think about just a change in buying habits of folks here inside the community. And so as we, uh, embark on year two of this, I think it's a good reminder for everyone in the community that, uh, their dollar and how they decide to spend it can make a big difference here in terms of creating surpluses that we can invest in other areas of, of the city. So, um, I, I think it's important for, for City of Falls Church to recognize that. And then, um, a couple other questions. One, I'm not upset that cigarette taxes are down personally. Uh, back to transit occupancy tax. Do we have, do we subscribe to any reports, um, that give us occupancy numbers and average daily rates for hotels in the city? Or we can actually see number of rooms occupied? Or do we get that data, some other?
Uh, I'll check with Becky Whitman and see what.
There's a report out there called the STAR report, uh, which is what most of the industry uses to benchmark their, uh, the, the metrics associated with their own properties. And it's incredibly informative just to understand, um, trends in the industry and how other properties are competing against one another. And then, uh, as Ms. Hardy had mentioned, I would like to spend considerable more time amount, uh, more amount of time on, uh, what we decide to do with this money. I voice some concerns, uh, in the Budget and Finance Committee, and I want to continue that conversation about how we decide to spend this money, uh, and what it means for the city and what the message that it sends to the voters and the citizens of Falls Church in terms of taking a, really a significant surplus and deciding to spend it on certain projects over, um, other issues that have been constantly raised that we're constantly telling folks we don't have money for. Uh, and now is the time for us to be able to address that and do some things, immediate, tangible, fix some issues, um, that, that we can fix in the short term. So, thank you.
Okay. Um, are there any other comments? Mr. Snyder?
Slide. I know, uh, top of mind to a lot of folks are some recent business closings. And I think we'd be able to hear a brief about what we're doing as a city to try to place those businesses as well as some vacancies that continue somewhat longer in duration. So I think that would be helpful, how aggressively we're going after that. That would be helpful. I also would like to see some allocation for traffic calming from any surplus that we have. I guess that's one of the most consistent issues as well as, um, potentially looking at some additional stormwater work. So, um, I think, uh, I would echo what the council members said. Those may, you may have had some additional recommendations, but I think we're going to want to see, uh, in one of those and perhaps alter the list of that.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments?
So are we going to talk about that list now?
Uh, I didn't really think, are we actually, is that part of our conversation for tonight or is that for another day? Did you?
I was, uh, we were envisioning this just being a report so the council has a, has situational awareness and then, uh, we would have a, a follow-up discussion on allocation of funds at, uh, a budget amendment, which would be in October.
All right. So why don't we plant the seed? I think the seed's been planted, at least for some items. If you've got a very short list of things you'd like to add, maybe feel free to, but why don't we save the indefinite?
Yeah, I was just going to echo that. I think sidewalks and traffic calming has been one thing that we consistently hear from residents. And so I do think it's important to put tangible projects back into the community, um, especially if we are seeing a lot of the, um, revenues come in from people spending money in the community. Um, I think one thing that might have been discussed in Budget and Finance was kind of the spirit of the revenue sharing. Um, I think that while we didn't officially implement that with the school board, I do think that's worth discussing more too, especially now that, um, we have good times. I think revenue sharing applies in good times and in bad times. And so if we have a good time right now, it'd be great to implement it to prepare for the bad times that are likely coming too.
All right. Well, why don't we wrap up this conversation? We've got a whole bunch of folks outside, uh, waiting, some of them inside, uh, to discuss the library. So, um, thank you very much for your fine work. I think this is good news and, um, how to spend surplus money is, uh, is a good problem, not a bad problem. So thank you very much and let's welcome our friends from the library and the library board.
So presenting for us tonight, we'll have, uh, our library director, Jenny Carroll, but we have Joel Timmons, who will, uh, be giving the, uh, update to the council on the project budget. And we have our architect team, uh, from BKV here, uh, and they will actually get things started off with an update on the building itself, um, and some of the key milestones we've just passed. And, you know, some key ones, uh, the planning commission viewed the site plan and approved it, uh, just about two weeks ago. And the, uh, the building plans themselves have been submitted to the city for actual building permits so that, uh, when we go, uh, when we work with Centennial to get their, our guaranteed maximum price numbers, those are off of, uh, plans that have been reviewed by the building official, um, and have a, a, a complete set. A couple of sort of key things we want to touch base then are sort of three big areas. One, project update. Two, uh, milestones and schedule and what's happening next. And then budget. Uh, the budget is the tough part of the discussion. Our current estimates are, uh, with, with, uh, costs for the project exceeding ten million dollars relative to the original budget of eight point four million dollars. Uh, so we want to talk about that, uh, be very upfront about, uh, that and discuss, uh, what's driving that. We anticipate that going from here. Uh, one thing I'll just note, um, also that at this point in our planning process, that construction number I just cited includes a fifteen percent contingency. Uh, we anticipate that that will get, uh, uh, we will reduce that contingency once the plans are finalized, um, unless we need it to address issues that come up in the finalization of the plans. But we wanted to have that, uh, larger contingency just, um, uh, to deal with, uh, potential issues as we, as we get towards the end. So, um, if we're set then, Jenny, do you want to do introductions for, for the team and then, uh, then we'll go from there?
Sure. Um, good evening, uh, council members and Wyatt and Cindy. Mark Manetti, Manetti is our architect with BKV Architects and Joel Timmons is our project manager. We also have a quorum of our library board members. Um, so, uh, we are joined by our chairperson, Stephanie Oppenheimer, along with Chet DeLong, Jeff Peterson, Kristy Swinney, um, Molly Novatny. Did I get everybody? Um, who are all here tonight in support of the project as well. Um, and I just also want to say how nice it was to see many of you at the Fall Festival. Um, we had a booth there and we spoke to over two hundred people and talked about the renovation and expansion and it was overwhelmingly positive. I had one person say the reason, one of the reasons they moved to the City of Falls Church was our library. Um, and also to let you know how, how well we are still being used, we had a half of, over half a million in circulation, um, this past fiscal year, along with over three hundred thousand, uh, visitors to the library as well. So we are a well-used and a well-loved library. So I'll let Mark Manetti talk about, um, the exteriors and the interiors a little bit and to talk about where we are in the project.
Great. This is the active one? Thanks.
Thank you for having us here. We're excited to present our project status. We are, we've just, just submitted our CD ninety-five percent submission and also submitted the permit. And we received a round, our first round of comments from, uh, plan review and also plumbing. So we are making very good progress through the permit process and we hope to have, um, all of the comments, um, from the first review cycle, uh, received within, uh, four to six weeks. And we will make the revisions to the drawings and then that will become the basis of the G M P, uh, at that point. So that's where we are in the process. Uh, I was asked to put together a quick fly-through, uh, of the exterior of the building. So that, those of you who haven't seen the design develop will have a quick look at it. So go ahead and hit play. So this is just, um, using the simulation tool that we use. I just did a quick, uh, um, flyer, fly-around, uh, before we, before we came here to present. And we have some, uh, walk, um, walk through, walk, uh, down the, uh, street front as well on Park Avenue in Northern Virginia. So this just gives you an overview of the addition you're seeing right now, the corner entrance. This is along Northern Virginia Avenue, um, coming around the rear where you have the alleyway. Nice, open, lots of, uh, opportunity for daylight and volume into this, uh, addition, so that we can really enhance the overall in, indoor environment. And this is the rear of the building. You're seeing the existing portion of the building in the alleyway. And now coming around where we have parking currently on our campus, the bay window where the children's library currently is. And we'll be repurposing that and it'll become the, uh, the adult, um, reading area, what we call the parlor. So very exciting. And here you can see the streets, the street front along Park Avenue coming up around, um, the Stormwater B M P that we're adding to handle stormwater, uh, management. And we'll do a walkthrough on Park Avenue now. The one that says park on it. Yeah. Yep. This is just coming up Park Avenue. One of the things we were asked to do by, um, the planning staff for the city was to incorporate the streetscape standards, which we did. Again, we also have a, a, a B M P for stormwater management, um, for, to handle the addition as well as part of the existing building. So we're coming up Park Avenue where we're now going to also integrate, uh, accessible parking and van accessible. Those things are currently deficient within our current facility. One of the elements that we tried to key on was this three arch window openings that you see throughout the building, um, providing a view into the space as well as out to cherry, uh, to the park across the street. And one thing that was really important, uh, in our process with, um, the community was determining where the entrance of the building was going to be. There was a lot of assumptions that were made in the master plan concepts, uh, from two thousand and fourteen, but ultimately, uh, we landed on a, a corner entrance with something that the community really liked. And I think it, uh, really activates the, the corner of that site between Park and Northern Virginia Avenue and also, uh, across the street where we'll, uh, be connecting, uh, eventually to the, um, streetscape as it's developed on the other side. And the last one we're going to look at here is coming up, uh, North Virginia Avenue. So here we can see that we're, the existing building is, uh, has a, has a lower level that doesn't get much daylight. You're going to get plenty of daylight into the lower level, which is going to be the children's, uh, library, um, in the addition. We're integrating the full streetscape standards. The trees have not been planted yet because it makes it hard to see the building when you see, when the trees are, uh, shown in the model. Integrating bicycle racks, uh, streetscape furniture, um, and plantings, um, and, uh, the streetscape lighting. So, uh, this will be a wonderful addition to, um, downtown, um, Falls Church and, uh, something I think that, uh, the residents, uh, will really enjoy. They want to go to the PowerPoint presentation now? Oh, it was in there too.
Uh, so this is just an overview of what we'll be talking about tonight. So we went through the ex, uh, exterior elevations and now we'll look at the floor plans, um, both for the upper level and the lower level, sorry. Then we'll look at the temporary locations, uh, the project timeline and then the budget. So these are, this is first the upper level and then the lower level, um, we'll go through. Do you want to?
Sure.
Okay.
Is this, uh? Oh, you'll move the mouse? Okay. All right. Well, um, so the corner entrance, you can see off the main level. Great. Yeah. Can you put your cursor on the, on the corner entrance? Yeah. Right. Yep. There it is, right there. And, uh, so you'll be accessing, uh, interior vestibule as you come into the building. It'll have, um, of course, in the portico, the covered portico, the corner entrance, we will have a book drop there as well. So maintaining a lot of the things, um, that, that, uh, area outside the current entrance where people gather, I don't know if you're aware of that, there are people gathering there, uh, waiting for the library to open, um, just every day that I, usually I'm there on Wednesdays and they're all waiting to get into the library. So, uh, we'll, we'll have something very similar to that with the corner entrance. You'll then walk through the vestibule. It'll be, um, uh, you know, an airlock vestibule to help with thermal, um, thermal comfort and, uh, energy. And, uh, then you'll walk into the main popular library and you'll immediately be, um, be faced with the service point, um, which are those desks right there. Exactly. And the popular library is the part of the library where you have a lot of the, uh, the popular books and DVDs and things of those natures. So right over there, you'll, you know, it'll be right as you come out. Now, to your immediate left is, is the new elevator. Now, that's the stair down a little bit. Yep, there you go. That's the elevator right there. So, um, we're creating a new elevator and this elevator is going to be much larger than the current elevator. Should be able to get, uh, we, we measured it, three, three, uh, three moms with bobs, uh, should be able to fit into that, uh, elevator and be able to go up and down. And then, of course, right next to that is the new stair to get you down. And so it's going to be an open stair because we're actually eliminating the existing open stair as it, uh, it, um, get, the way that we're laying out the facility, uh, doesn't lend itself to what we're trying to do. So that one is going to get filled in. Uh, we are trying, we are going to keep the mosaic tile though, where, um, everyone's familiar with the, the half arch with the green tiles in it as you come in behind, uh, behind the current stair. So we are maintaining that. That's very important to some of our community. Um, and of course, on this level is the adult, um, reading area. So, uh, you're seeing, you know, to your right, those are all the adult stacks and then the addition. And then you have reading area, uh, and cubicles around the perimeter where you're going to get an abundance of natural light into that addition, that addition. Uh, we are going to, um, repurpose the exterior of the building so you actually will see the exterior facade from inside the addition. So, uh, wanted to definitely keep some of that character. As you move through the building, uh, do you, can you go to where the existing, uh, group toilet rooms are? Yep. Now, those are the new ones. Those are the new family toilet rooms right there. Yep. Yeah. Those are, yep, those are the, those are the existing group toilet rooms. We are going to make them fully compliant with accessibility code. And then we are adding two family restrooms on the upper level as well. It will be fully ADA compliant. We're moving the local history room up to the upper level as well. Um, that goes back and that's where your, your current, um, children's library is, a portion of it anyway. And so that's where the, the, the local history, um, library, uh, collection will be, um, placed. And then where we had the, where the, the youth library had that, um, stepped area right there, that's now going to be what we're calling the parlor. So that'll be the adult reading room, uh, next to that. And then, of course, to the left of that is, uh, a meeting area, um, one of our, uh, community meeting areas that we've integrated into the, into the design as well. Technical, our staff offices are to the right. The old, um, conference room is now going to be, uh, adult staff. And then, of course, the, the other, uh, staff spaces still remain as well as the I T room. And I think that's pretty much it on the upper level. And we go downstairs now. And this was a ma, this was a major part, part of the programming and master planning was the decision to put the children's library on the lower level and to, uh, put the adult library in the popular level, all in the upper. So, um, it, it, it took, uh, a, you know, a lot of community engagement, but we came to that decision. I think it was a, it ended up being a very good decision because the, uh, the size of the library for the children's, certainly the children is, is, is much bigger. library for the children's, certainly the children is, is, is much bigger now for a multitude of reasons. It makes a lot of sense to have the, the children's library on the lower level. So let's go through the spaces, starting from the elevator stair area. As you come into the building, come into the space, you're immediately going to see the service point. Yep, right there, wherever your cursor is, that's where the service point is. So there's going to be a service point on the lower level as well. Behind the service point is our large group meeting area. And this is where your storytime function is going to occur. So this is a great additional space because if you've ever been a storytime, it's, it's very congested and it can be intimidating for some families as well. So this will be a great opportunity to maximize that program space. Immediately to the right is our early childhood literacy, literacy space. So this is for those kids who are just beginning to, to explore books and, and, you know, there's a lot of interactives in there and a lot of things that really help develop those motor, those fine motor school, skills for children. They will enable them to, to, to start their journey of literacy. So it's a wonderful space with lots of colors. Some of the things that we're doing on the lower level is we're, we're trying to maximize the, the, the volume in that space. As you know, the ceilings are pretty low in the current space, so we're, we're actually going to remove the ceilings and we're going to have what we call clouds. And clouds and we're going to have some exposed elements, mechanical stuff like, things like that, integrated into those systems. But that, all that helps us to get more space into that, into that space. It's going to be full of vibrant colors, furnishings and things that are exciting. We do have some video simulations of those that we're going to share with the library board this coming Wednesday as well. But it's going to be a very active space, full of color, you know, full of just wonderful experiential type things. So moving from the main library or from the early childhood library, then you move into the main area for children's, that's the main children's library. And then there are a couple of spaces up further, which is our teen collection right there. That's the teen collection. And then to the left is our, is our teen room. This is going to be a great place for, for teenagers who, who want to have a space of their own to go in there and they'll have different things that they can do in there. And then, of course, to the right of that, we have some small group learning spaces. There are also two new family toilet rooms on this level as well so that every, every floor now has an accessible toilet room for the public, which is really important. So then I cover all of the, I think I did. Okay. And of course, the staff offices in the, in the, in the back, that's technical services and then staff lounge and a lot of the support spaces are all occurring in those areas.
There was a lot of conversation over the entrance in the bottom that's shown there. Is that full ingress egress?
Currently, it's intended just for emergency, emergency egress. Now, that doesn't mean, we've designed it in such a way that it could be expanded to use, but that's, that's an operational discussion because it will impact operations.
I know we've had the conversation about staffing and then also safety concerns.
Yeah.
And I've raised this point before, but I think it's, it just makes it a mu, a much more efficient use of having the kids downstairs by having that particular access point open and operable. But I do understand the operational challenges.
So along with the safety and security, so the preferences from Chief Gavin that we have one entrance. So I will, so the temporary?
Sorry, question. Are bathrooms gender neutral?
Uh, they're family toilets, so they're.
All of them are?
The, the four new ones are. The two toilets that are currently designated male and female will probably remain so. One of them has a urinal and a toilet and the other one has two toilets. But all the new ones are family toilets. So the temporary locations, our temporary locations will be Thomas Jefferson Elementary School. The trailers that are, are at that campus, the trailers that are located right next to Thomas Jefferson Elementary School. It's seven trailers hooked together. So the collection and a majority of the staff will be housed in that location. We will also be in gauge house. The administration and technical services will be there. Currently, we're doing surveys and estimates for the moving and storage of the library. And we, we think that we will be moving in December to the temporary sites. And so I'll let Joel talk about the timelines and I think you're.
So we're looking at going to, we're receiving the GMP from Centennial through November and into December, relocating to the temporary sites in December. Jenny and the staff have been working diligently and preparing, starting probably last month, we have September up here. But they'll be ready, ready to move in time for December, possibly into January. Looking at construction starting possibly as late as February. That is a worst-case scenario. We are, a lot of moving parts between getting the permit, getting BKV, making adjustments to the permit drawings, getting final GMP pricing, negotiations and all that stuff. But a lot, a lot of places in there where we can make up some time, but February 2020 is our, our latest start time. And we're looking at occupancy in March of 2021. So for budget, our total estimate right now is 10.8 million. CIP budget was 8.4, gives us a delta of 2.463. Founder's rows, VCs, 297. So the total shortfall right now is 2.1, a little bit more. So the cost changes, the first one is we bumped up the contingency for the owner's contingency. We left the, the C Mar contingency of five, contingency of 5%. Bumped the owners up to 10% because we are aware of some unknowns. We know that Planning Commission added irrigation to the site plan. We do not have that in the budget. We have some unanswered questions for the lead silver. We're a couple of points short. We're going to need some, to buy some offset credits in order to get to the lead silver. Low voltage, security, AV and IT were all added to both BKV scope and to the C Mar scope. We used the city hall as an example of where it was separate from the C Mar and from the design team and it ended up costing more in the end. So some lessons learned brought forward there. And with these increased in scope for the C Mar, there were some additional design cost items. Also added the stormwater by retention area and the moving and storage estimates are coming back higher than we had expected a few years ago when the budgets were first So I think probably the best thing to do is just have an open discussion about, I'm sure you're looking at me like you have lots of questions.
Alright, well, thank you all. Thank you all at the table and thank you in the back of the room and the community as well for all the, all the time and effort that has taken us to where we are today. I know it's been quite a journey and I appreciate particularly the library board's participation as well. I imagine, as you say, there probably are plenty of questions or comments and why don't we go ahead and open it up to counsel, Mr. Z?
So can you, and, and I appreciate that you going last after all the pretty pictures and fly-throughs and colors and stuff that, you know, it's your job to give us the bad news here, so. Can you just walk us through in more detail all the things that are contributing to the 2.16 million, which I think is coincidental to the budget surplus, is it not? Leaving maybe 150K for a party or two for the city, maybe some traffic coming, so, you know. For example, the 50% contingency, is that, is that a comfortable place to be?
I think it's a, it's a comfortable place to be at this point. When we were standing out there talking, I was comparing budgets to hurricanes, but it's the exact opposite. The cone of uncertainty gets narrower as you get closer to actually starting the project. So that's exactly what's happening, going down to that 10%, in this case, moving up to 10% contingency on the owner's side, just because we know of some of the unknowns.
Well, you know, rework is, and renovations are, are typically fraught with issues. And so, you know, I'm used to seeing 25 and even higher for contingency to cover these things. So, you know, whose head do we get when we blow the 15% and it's done?
Uh, we'll, when we, when we go through the GMP process, we'll probably reevaluate and see where we are, how the numbers are coming back and then reevaluate then.
Because if I were the C Mar, I would just pack in all the contingency I need for, for things like electrical and infrastructure and things like that. But I think it's a conversation that we could probably have later. It's just my way of saying that I think the 15% is optimistic. With regard to the streetscape and irrigation, you said that was something the Planning Commission, or did I mishear you? That and the bio-retention as well?
The, the arborist had requested irrigation at the planters.
Why wouldn't you have that to begin with?
It was, to begin with, it was inside the lead boundaries?
Well, I think a broader discussion is the requirement to, to meet the streetscape standards was not included in the original budget estimates for the project as I understand it. So when we went through the, the initial meetings with planning and it was decided and determined that no, we are in the, the area that requires a streetscape and we integrated that into the design, I don't know that that was a, a, a number that was captured in the original budget.
I see.
And of course, irrigation system goes part and parcel with that because if you add the planters, then you naturally need to irrigate them.
When was the streetscape design completed? About 2017?
That's right. So, and, and this, the work to scope out the original library project was in 2014.
And whose job would that be to ensure that these requirements would be coordinated?
Well, I mean, I have to take my responsibility for that. With the, with the costing for the original library scope of work, it was a, you know, the library board and library staff commissioned that study and, and scoped it and they were focused on the library naturally. And I think I should have raised my hand and said that we need to expand this to do the full site and the streetscape. At that time in 2014, Park Avenue was not part of our, our streetscape area nor was North Virginia, so we assumed 14 feet and, and pretty minimal, you know, enhancements on the street.
You got a lot of holes in your body. Why, all these sword cuts, you know, so you're walking, talking, taking nourishment. I think that's pretty good.
I thi, I think the truth of the matter is when we were doing that consultant's report, we weren't thinking about the streetscape and that's, and it wasn't in the numbers. When you go back and look at the whole budget for the entire streetscape, I think it's like $30,000 or something.
So we are finally going to put in the low voltage, IT, all the stuff, AV that that wasn't, that wasn't in there before either? That was a carve-out? A conscious project management decision that's carve-out to be installed later or, or is it exactly as you've said, that's a lesson learned?
It was, it was as a lesson learned. I'm not sure how the city typically handles low voltage type stuff.
It should be part of the contract, period.
Right, well.
It's not a lesson learned. It's a lesson that's been learned since they invented the internet 40 years ago, 50 years ago.
Right, well, we do, we do a lot of.
Still learning the lesson?
We do a lot of federal contracting and a lot of times in the federal contracts.
I used to be the CIO of a, of a large federal agency, I can tell you. So don't give me that lesson.
Joel, I can, I can answer. So in the 2014 master plan addendum, it allotted $0 towards that. So when we went back and once we were, once the CIP project was approved and that was in 2017, then our project manager at the time, Kim Callahan, did put a certain amount towards that. So that's what that is in reference to. So, so once we were into the project, there was a certain amount allotted to that. However, it, it is a significant issue for the library because we do not have a lot of low voltage happening, so we need to add that in. We also need to increase our security and of course provide AV into the new study group rooms and the two new conference rooms as well. And we need to be cognizant of IT needs as well because technology is part of the library and it's only going to increase, so.
Okay, thank you for that. And, and so finally, the mention in passing that to get to lead silver and you're short, that you would have to buy some off-site credits. Can you explain that?
Sure. So where we currently are, the mandate is to achieve lead, lead silver.
And that's the current lead silver version 4.1 or whatever.
4.1, right. That's correct. And currently, we're hovering around 48 points and the need is 50. Some of the credits that are available include purchasing of carbon offsets as well as green sources of renewable energy. And there's an upfront cost for that that needs to be budgeted. I was trying to get the information today. On the power side, it looks like about 2,000 would be the cost, but that's the smaller of the two costs. The larger the two has to do with the carbon offsets for gas usage. And I need to get the annual consumption from the model first and then we can figure out what that's going to be.
There seems to be a poor solution not to cut you off here, but to get to 50 and, and, you know, you obviously want to get a little bit more than that.
That's correct.
To spend that kind of money to buy off-site credits is, you know, it's a kind of anathema. What are the things that we could do here to achieve the fit, to achieve the lead silver? Is it, is it more tinkering with HVAC? Is it more insulation? Is it?
Well, we, we've done.
Boom on the windows or what is it exactly that we need to do here?
To get, to capture additional points in terms of our, of our energy performance. There, there are options that are still on the table. We, we have looked at many of them at this point to, just to get to where we currently are. We're showing right now six, achieving six points in the model, which is pretty good for adaptive reuse of libraries as it currently is. We, there is some potential to potentially increase that and we, we had some items that we thought, you know, we could do to do that. One of the things we're trying to do is to reuse the existing rooftop unit two, repurpose it as well as rooftop unit, geez, I'm going to get these confused. We're replacing rooftop unit one because it's currently leaking. We're adding rooftop unit four. Rooftop unit two, we think we can repurpose even though it's designed as a VVT system, but we think we can repurpose it, but we have to replace the other one. So we're trying to use, reuse what we can because it's still within its life cycle. And we're trying to, to set it up so that it can be repurposed directly and easily. So the, the one unit that isn't, that is going to be reused currently serves the staff spaces and that's, so it's, it's contained within those spaces. And the VVT system makes more sense for the smaller spaces than it does for the larger spaces. So to answer your question, we, we could replace that one too as a potential. And that would provide us some benefit in terms of energy. You know, you're paying more for that, but you might get, get the payback quicker than you, obviously if you're just buying credits, it's, you're done. You pay the money and you're done. There are other, also other offset credits. There were, there's a contribution for open space that were restoring the hap, restoring your, your habitat that we're, we're looking at as well, targeting. And I think that was a $4,800, or $4,600 was the budget number on that. So we're trying to put together a concise number of all of those different items to achieve the, the lead goal of, we would, as you said, we would like to be around 52, 53 going into this certification process. Right now, we're at 48. And that is also assuming certain things that we're. And that is also assuming certain things that we're, we're going to go ahead and get the enhanced commissioning online and get that moving. So there are certain things that we're assuming that we're going to do in order to get to the 48. So we're just, right now, we're focusing on, there's two points that we're exploring right now that we think we can get that have to do with the system controllability and the lighting, and the, and the lighting, interior environmental quality. We think we can get those, and that takes some of the pressure off of it. But we are currently within the 48, assuming those credit purchases. And one of those credits, I think it's the open space credit. If you achieve the credit, because it's a regional credit, you actually get another point. So there's a benefit to achieving that credit. So, you know, that's where we are in a nutshell. I can tell you that if this project was being designed in 2009, we would be looking at lead gold right now, rather than struggling to get lead silver. And that's just the nature of the system. It's harder and harder to achieve these and you're, you're in a...
That's the way it's supposed to be. So I appreciate you taking the time to go through this.
Sure.
And so the question that comes to mind naturally is, as you're working through the, the trade-offs, who ultimately would make the decision? Is it the library board, or the city manager, or council? We all care about it.
Right.
The decision on what?
On how you get the lead credits?
The which credits?
Yeah.
I think that's ultimately a decision that's at a, the project's team level, to some degree.
To some degree, except where there's, where we're basically incurring cost to the city. In which case, we need the city to agree to it.
Well, if there comes a time and a place where you need to bring that back to the city, I would appreciate if you'd bring it back to us.
Yeah, I think it does matter to council, just to elaborate on Dan's point, whether it's provided onsite. I'd certainly have a preference to onsite, energy reduction, efficiencies, et cetera, as opposed to buying an off-site credit somewhere. So, I mean, I don't know if others will speak, and I'll speak in a few minutes, but I think it does matter, at least to council, how we get the credits, not just that we get the credits.
Thank you, Mayor.
Other comments, Ms. Hardy?
Yeah, I was just going to say that, you know, we talked earlier about leading by example. So I think we do, it does make sense for us to actually be lead silver for real and not because we pay our way out of it. Since it looks like we're still three to four months away from GMP, are we going to be north of 10.? Are you telling me now that it is going to be 10.8 and that's the final number?
There's still some uncertainty, but we should be pretty close. I, it's hard to, to say we definitely will not go over there. There's, there is that chance, but we're getting it narrowed down. We're getting it more solidified.
And is it customary to start the move preparations in January when we don't have GMP yet? The timeline's the way that it lined up looked a little concerning to me because of that.
We had discussed that some, about how far we go before we get to the GMP.
In terms of moving, we do have to start preparing. I mean, it's not something that we can, you know, the GMP gets approved and poof, it all gets moved. There has to be a lot of coordination. We have to ensure that we're securing, moving and storage. A vendor who can handle a library collection and a library move. The staff has to prepare. We have to decide what's going to, to temporary location, what's going into storage. We have to make sure that our IT is operational before we open a temporary location. Or that, and that support staff is operational as well, so that they can support the staff in the TJ trailers. So it, it's, we've, we've actually been preparing for quite some time. So, we have to start now.
Yeah, no, I certainly appreciate that operationally, there's a lot of work to do to prepare. But I would just express some concerns that if we're not really going to get a final number until January, to be able to, essentially be spending a lot of money up until there. I'm curious what our burn rate is. I think I asked about that last time. How much have we spent so far and, you know, what's the cost incurred to date?
So far, we have spent... 1.3 million.
Thank you.
Other comments? Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Thanks. Can you guys walk me through the contingency? So we've got 15%. You've got a total projected cost estimate of 10.845. So it's 15% on your original budget of 8.3?
It is, um, the CMAR's contingency...
Just give me the dollar amount for the contingency. What does 15% equal?
Well, the, the CMAR's contingency is 5% on their hard costs, which is 305,000. The owner's contingency is 10% on the entire GMP, which is... 766,000.
Good. And the reason that you guys built in a 15% contingency or separated that way is because of top concerns for you guys?
Top concerns are just the known unknowns that we have right now. We don't know, we're fairly confident the city's going to come back after the permit review and have very few comments. The CMAR is still developing their GMP pricing book. There could be some differences there. Still have to figure out how we're getting the 50-plus lead credits. Those are all the known unknowns. And then there's the unknown unknowns that we just don't, don't know of yet.
Good. So thank you. So I, I've had the, the good fortune of sitting in a lot of meetings with you guys as a liaison to the library board to have some insight into this detail. And I'll just make this comment for consumption by council and others. From the very first meeting, when we sat down and started talking about this, just the explanation, and by the way, I voted in the referendum for this library project, without knowing the details of the scope. An expansion, refurbishment, renovation, it's great. You know, you, you trust it. We've scoped it appropriately. From the very first meeting, we sat and listened to the details. And I work in real estate, but I would not consider myself an expert. The description of the scope of this project, just even generally speaking, versus the dollars that the voters approved, never comported in my mind. Meaning, what we went and asked the voters to approve for this particular project, just based generally on what we wanted to do, but in terms of expanding square footage and all the stuff that comes along with it. Forget cost escalation, forget tariffs, forget all of that. It just never seemed to comport. And I had a concern without some serious value engineering, which has taken place over the last year, at least in the conversations that I've been in with the library board. These numbers were never going to match, in my opinion. They just, they, they weren't. Unless you decide not to expand actual square footage and renovate in place, it just is not going to happen. My frustration with this has been how we ended up getting to a dollar amount of around eight and a half million dollars on this is beyond me. I just, I don't understand the math that went into determining the value that we put on a referendum that November in front of voters to ask them to approve this particular project, explaining what we thought this project would become. I personally think that we could sit here for hours on end, talking about how we could continue to value engineer this and all of the other options, but at the end of the day, there is going to be a cost overrun and it is going to be significant. That is just a fact. There is not enough to pull out of this project unless somebody said, "We're not going to do an expansion" and get anywhere close to the number that we were originally putting in front of the voters. That's just plain and simple. So the question becomes, level of comfort, heartburn, acceptance as to what folks want to do to get this project within scope, or within, reasonably within scope, to what is being discussed here today? And based on all the feedback that's taken place over the last year. And then I have another question for staff, which was a point of frustration after voting on advancing bond issuance on the list of items that we had, accelerating that bond issuance to take advantage of interest rates. Knowing what we know now, why would we not have included at least some contingency to increase the bond issuance to cover what we would have expected this increased cost to come in? I know there was some money that was included, but it was not enough to cover what we're talking about here. Why would we not have included that, at least as part of that discussion?
So Ms. Bawa has a response to that. And her response is probably better than my response, so we should just turn it over to her. But on your original question about the scoping of that original study, and it's similar to Mr. Z's question. I think of all the people in the, around this table, I'm, I'm the one who was here when that study was done. I was there when the referendum question was formed. And I took the consultant's number and we should have escalated it. We, you know, working with a 2014 number is just difficult and was not realistic or practical. But that, that's what we did. And so, I take responsibility for that.
Yeah, I think, again, it's, it's one of those things where if the referendum had said $12 million or $14 million, it probably still would have passed. And so, it's, it's almost a cautionary tale in whether you look at City Hall, you look at the library project, you look at other potential projects in the city's future, that the planning and preparation and the messaging and the forethought around the cost of these projects save a whole heck of a lot of heartburn in conversations like this, getting to the final finish line, and then talking about what grade of carpet we want to put or don't want to put inside of a building in order to try to scrape pennies to get it back to a particular budget. And so that scoping exercise is incredibly important as we continue to estimate for projects. And if it requires huge contingencies, to try to look into a crystal ball of what may be happening at a federal level, which is almost impossible these days, or just trying to stay a little bit more on point, it's, it's something that we've got to do a better job of, because we should not be sitting in a position where we've contemplated a project well before 14, talked about scoping, gone through the chopping block, put a number on a referendum, only to think about building six years later. We just have to know that the numbers are not going to be the same. Sorry, Ms. Bawa. Response to the bond question.
Can I address the funding a little bit? So per the referendum, when we go for the next bond issuance, we cannot request any more in principal money, more 8.7. That was total, including the issuance cost. However, we can structure, there is a likelihood of structuring the debt service that we pay in such a way that we can push one principal payment by six months. Normally, in a year, we make two debt service payments, one in January and one in July. Since we are going to issue in fall, technically, our next issue, payment is going to be July, which we're going to make it to June. So we are able to make one payment in fiscal year '20. We can make that payment, just interest payment, and push one principal payment. So the first principal payment would be December of 2020. That payment, as we modeled, assuming 3%, would be roughly close to 1.8 million. Pushing it 16, six months, by half of the year at 3%, costs us roughly 30,000.
So, in, in that description, that is a ways and means that we can have further discussion with council on. Effectively, what it does, though, is because we wouldn't be making that principal payment in July, we're essentially spreading those payments then out over the life of the bond. So it is a way to finance it. It would be not issuing debt specifically for the library. We'd be using cash to cover the difference. Other comments?
[laughing]
I understand that, 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 that authorization... Authorizes.
Sure.
There's two full, there's two formal actions the council would have to take. The council would have to amend the budget to authorize the expenditure funds. And second, the council would have to approve the contract or authorize me to sign the contract at this higher level. So those are the two votes that would be required.
So the referendum is to approve the library and the scope as determined by the library board and other interests, stakeholders, and it's up to us. Once we authorize it, we don't need to go back and ask.
Yeah, I'm still confused. My puzzled look still remains. So you're saying that because it was a referendum, we couldn't bond the difference beyond what was voted for and not, correct? The only, the only legal way to pay for this is to amend the budget.
What I think I feel most comfortable saying is we're proposing an alternate way. Before I say what you can and can't do, I'm, let me just say affirmatively, we're proposing a way that it could be done.
Okay, now this is just my edification for future projects. Things related to council requests or things that were unforeseen at the time of referendum, like a streetscape change, for example, which is city improvement. Yes, it's related to the project, but streetscape. Lead certification, which is something that may or may not have changed since it was initially approved. Something like that, that was out of scope, not part of it. Those types of things in the, in the future, or even now, could not be bonded outside of what was already approved as part of the referendum.
Again, you know, what the voters approved was 8.7, and so we're just taking that number for the purposes of this discussion, saying that's all the debt we're going to issue for the project. And so what Ms. Bawa has presented is a way where the project could be financed without extending more than 8.7 million dollars in debt for the project. And we do that by delaying one of the principal payments, which frees up cash, and so we cover the difference.
One of the principal payments related to just a portion of the debt associated with the library, you're talking about a portion of the debt for that entire tranche we talked about. Two million dollars seems like a lot.
Entire tranche, yeah.
The entire tranche, okay.
Need to use the entire tranche to get.
I figured as much.
Also, we have presented our debt capacity to the rating agencies based on the model we did. That is a concern. We do not want to increase the debt capacity on this.
Even if we could get comfortable with the new creative way of doing this, I think my overriding concern still is that the shortfall currently is 2.2 million, but I'm not hearing that that's the absolute final number. So in three months, we may be looking at something north of that, right? So until we get there, I think I still have some reservations. I'm going to hold my other comment for now.
And just one other thought. You asked a question about the streetscape lead. I would say lead is intrinsic to the project. That can't be carved out as a separate council authorization. We could have a discussion about the streetscape. Maybe I'll give myself credit that back in 2014, I was thinking maybe the city was just going to do the streetscape. I don't recall exactly what our thinking was. But that could be a separate authorization. And the stormwater facilities, that also could be a separate authorization. Probably from the library board's perspective, they're trying to build a library. They weren't thinking about these other things. They're viewing those as doing sort of broader community benefits. But at any rate, for, so we can keep our eye on everything, we've put everything together, and that's the number that you see.
Great Streets money. Don't we have Great Streets money for Park Avenue? Is that available for this?
We do.
This is on a great street.
It is on the great street. The timing is the issue there. And that money is, the way the state is allocating those grant funds, it's just very slow and it doesn't sync up with this project.
This project, that part, Great Street is also short funding, so we're having to pursue additional funding for Park Avenue, Great Street, so it's not fully funded and delayed. And it's not aligning with the library's project, and the streetscape would be required as part of the site plan.
Believe it or not, I usually try to reserve my orations for the purpose of persuading four people to do whatever it is that I want to do. I despair that I have anything to say that would contribute to that objective in this particular instance. So I'm just going to try to satisfy a couple of questions that I have. I thought Mr. Lipton House's points were well taken about how we take a look at municipal projects as opposed to how we take a look at school projects. On the school side, they seem to be pretty disciplined and focused on, you know, asking for the amount of money they believe they actually need to accomplish what they want to accomplish. Sometimes we have some discussions. I remember about the time that we were talking about this library, we were also talking about Mount Daniel, and Mr. Z, you know, carried the flag for higher lead certification on Mount Daniel than the schools wanted to bring, too. So that was, we've made progress here in recent years. Now, the assumption is that we do these things five or six years ago. That was not necessarily the assumption. But my hope, going back to the first time I sat down with the consultants for the library in 2013, was that we would, you know, make a kind of revolutionary step forward to, you know, the library of the future, whatever that meant. And I quickly realized that the library board itself and the community more broadly didn't share my objective. That they like the library pretty much the way it is, modernize it, expand it, make it ADA compliant and so forth. So fairly early on, I trimmed my sails back to something that I thought the community would get behind. And so one question I did want to ask in relation to the design, which seems nice, I mean, it seems like a very nice design. It's reminiscent of the work that we did in the early 90s, which expanded the then original library in a way that's served the community well for decades now. This is not a great leap forward from what we have now, but it's a significant improvement. On the North Virginia Street side, the, I don't know if you want to call it the pictures again, but the way the windows work and the way the light enters the new addition, wasn't quite clear on that. Do the windows pass through to not only the addition area but into the original part of the building? The way you were describing it is, is there natural light that finds its way from the North Virginia side of the building into the original area or not?
So you obviously can borrow light in many different ways through your building. The place where you're going to get the most direct light is on the west side of the building. And that faces the existing alleyway, and it's the part of the addition that sits out, and there's no building proud of it. So you'll get a lot of direct light in there, but you'll also get a lot of ambient light in there, so that, you know, you're going to be lighting a large volume of space. And then you have openings between the addition and the existing building.
Right.
So you see where the existing windows were?
Yeah.
Those are now openings. We've taken the windows out.
Okay, so there are openings in the mortar, I mean, in the wall.
We just removed the window altogether and the seat wall.
Okay.
So now you can pass through. So the idea is, you know, you have a relationship to the light that's filling the addition. And you'll get the most direct light through those three windows to the west.
Uh huh.
Okay, no, the other way.
The other, yeah, the other, the alley side, yeah. Okay, all right.
There you go, right there.
Okay, well, I appreciate you going through that again. I thought that that's what you meant, but I just wasn't sure. I think that's good. You know, the children's area, there was, in earlier iterations of our discussions, there was much hand wringing about that. And I think the question about the entrance and exit that Ms. Lipton House brought up is still, should still be kept open, at least as an exit, you know, to enable, at the end of story time, people to leave the building, if not enter the building. I think that ought still to be kept in mind. I understand security concerns. You know, we have some of the same concerns here at this building. I think, you know, we built a building here that we're now taking another look at in light of security concerns, and there's going to be some changes here and some personnel things happening here over the next few years that speak to security. But at any rate, seems like the kids' area has worked out pretty well. So I come away fairly satisfied with, you know, what we're getting for the money that we're paying. I know it's more money than we thought we were going to pay, but if we took just the 8.7 that was bonded at referendum, and remember when we voted on that referendum, that was before we even undertook serious discussions about what the school, high school price tag was going to be. There was, you know, community-wide anxiety that, you know, we were getting it over our head with all the public works projects that we were undertaking, the high school, City Hall, library, oh my God, how are we going to manage it all? Good news is, we're managing it all pretty good. You know, the high school's coming in great, City Hall worked out to be a pretty nice building. It's got some issues that relate to how we don't plan these municipal projects as well as maybe we wish. We, you know, cut corners where we shouldn't. But I would say, at the end of the day, that, you know, the amount of money that you're talking about is delivering us some good value for our dollar. And the more I talk, and the more all of us talk, the more expensive it gets. So I would hope that we could move with all deliberate speed to get to a GMP number that everybody can decide they want to vote for or not and get this project started. One last point. We did learn from the City Hall project that the coming and going part is the most stressful. Well, I mean, the building of the building was not unstressful, but the impact on the staff of leaving the building to temporary quarters, and especially the leaving the temporary quarters to come back to the new building, was very stressful and involved cost and things that we hadn't anticipated. And I assume that, since we're perched at the trailers at TJ, that we're not going to, like, have to pay somebody, you know, for another 30 days or 60 days if things take a little longer with the library construction than we anticipate. At least, that's my hope. And that therefore we could make sure that when we move into the new library, that it is truly ready to go. You know, all the computers are working, the lights are functioning, which is not quite the case as it was with City Hall, because we just had to get out of that rented space over on Columbia Street. So the end game is, got some flexibility to it, I hope.
Yes.
Okay.
Do you want me to talk about that?
No, that's just, yes, is good. Thanks.
All right, are there other comments? Ms. Hardy?
Okay. So besides staring long and hard at that 2.2, which we think might be a little higher, my point is I think we just need to make sure we're not looking at that 2.2 in a vacuum. So I'm going back to the list of unfunded capital things that we did not talk about earlier today. So we are not quite done with City Hall. We might be needing another 1,800,001.3. Looks like Big Chimneys has some issues. And I think while we did get the good news from the superintendent tonight that everything so far is still on track, that is going to be more than 10 times the project of the size. So I just think we need to go in with our eyes wide open to any sort of overage on any sort of our capital projects. I think we knew going in that when we voted for this full CIP, that we are taking on a whole lot. So I think we need to be very cautious about any shortfall, and especially when we're three months away from getting to a GMP.
All right, are there other comments? Mr. Snyder?
Well, thanks a lot for the work that the library board has done and library staff to try to move forward on this project. One thing I'd like is a line-by-line costing there, too, so that we can have a better sense of, you've sort of given us those, but what are the actual costs for each of those? It would be helpful for analysis purposes. Secondly, the cost per square foot for this, how does that compare to the cost per square foot for, or purchase part of one of the new developments that we're doing? So I know we'll get that question, we'll get it repeatedly, and I just want to make sure that under the circumstances, this is the most cost-effective way to produce the kind of library that the community wants. I really don't have anything else to say. Libraries are critical element of the community. We are where we are, and, but I do want to keep making sure that we get the maximum efficiency and whether we can bring those numbers down. Thank you.
Okay, I've got just a couple, excuse me, comments. Refresh my recollection, I looked through the staff report, didn't see anything about FFNE. How is that being handled? And where does that come in in all those?
We have a $665,000 for FFNE.
Has that number gone up? I mean, I feel like that's the next hammer to fall, is that?
It has gone up compared to, we originally had $602,000 budgeted for FFNE, so it's gone up about 10%.
Just refresh my recollection as well. So has this been bid out? Is this all done, these numbers from cost estimates? Like, in other words, you or someone on your staff is coming up with cost estimates of what this is going to cost? Has there been any bidding so far at all? What's the basis of the numbers we're getting right now?
Basis of the numbers we're getting right now are the estimates that the C Mar produces. They gave us an estimate at design development, and 65%, they're working on estimates now, but we don't have their cost book yet. They will bid out each of the subs.
So they'll bid it out, and that's when we'll get our GMPs based on the bid out?
Yes.
But right now, it's just based purely on cost estimates? Is that right?
It's based on cost estimates. They have got some of their pricing from subs. They've compared some of the pricing, three different subs. But it's some of, it's, it's some of it's from RS means and experience, but it's a full, open book GMP, so we will, we will know the full costs in their proposal.
The FFNE is based on, we're writing contracts for the FFNE.
You say writing contracts?
Writing contracts.
From whom?
Fairfax.
Of Fairfax?
Yeah.
In terms of the scope for the FFNE, who came up with that?
Say it again.
Who came up with the scope for the FFNE? Who decided what furniture to get, what, you know, wall hangings you need or whatever you need to fill up this place?
So city staff worked with library consultants, Kimberly Bowlin and Associates.
Okay. I would also like to know just sort of how these numbers have fluctuated or what each line item is, and the design costs have gone up 800,000 or whatever it is, it would be nice to know that. Is there going to be any additional staff required to operate this library, the new library?
So in the fiscal year 2021, I have asked for additional 0.5 for the IT, and then also probably a 0.5 in the circulation staff.
And what's that based on, those numbers?
So that's based on what we're currently doing in circulation, which we're over half a million, and just looking at what staff duties and responsibilities are with, and that's probably pretty conservative for staffing. So having the service, we're going from three service desks down to two service desks, and the one on the upper floor will be an information desk, so that will be serviced by both circulation and reference staff. So we'll be looking at that model, and we're working on that right now. So it should provide some relief to our, to our staff in order to staff the local history room, which has been a request from the public, from the library board, and I believe from city council.
So your, so your potential increase in staff is just based on volume essentially, not on design?
Right now.
Like, you don't need an extra person to man the desk because the desk is near an exit or some design issue of how the building?
As long as that lower level remains an emergency exit. If that becomes an entrance, then that changes things.
Okay. I would express the frustration you probably heard from other folks of continuing cost increases. It seems like this is just kind of continuing to go uphill really quick, and much faster than inflation or even construction inflation has gone up. And so I really hope that we can get these costs under control and, because it's just, we just can't do business where we have these increases, you know, kind of every time we talk, it seems like it's going up by some amount of the others. So I am looking forward to getting some certainty. And I guess, when is that coming? When do we know for sure what the number is?
Four to six weeks from now.
Okay. And that'll be done through bidding out, like multiple sub bids, three or more, or whatever the number is on each of the trades?
Correct.
And then we'll have a number that basically we can count on other than, you know, unforeseen items or change orders by us? Is that right?
That's correct.
Is it four to six weeks? You should be able to have the GMP set for them to mark. How long does the G, the process take? Is it three weeks or four weeks?
They had three weeks.
Three weeks or?
So in four to six weeks, we'll have the, basically, what they can bid out. It'll take another three weeks of the bids to come back. When the bids come back, we'll know the GMP number, basically, right? The final number, essentially.
And we also have to go, city staff has to go through a negotiation process for the GMP.
Okay. And who are we negotiating with?
Mike.
And what are we negotiating on, though? The subs have put in their bids. Who are we negotiating with and about what?
So when we get into the negotiations, we're going to look at the package that they give us. They may give us two or three different subs, and we're going to look at the subs. They don't always give you the lowest bid. They'll give you the contractor that can do the work on their schedule, and if they can do it on their schedule, then they may pick that one versus the low bid. So we'll evaluate those when they come in as well.
And that'll be you?
Well, myself, Lionel, Joel, so the whole team will evaluate those.
Okay. All right. Okay, listen again. Thanks for all the work. I know it's been a little bony for everyone, and hopefully we're getting near the finish line. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we've got just one last item, which I think is schedule and council requests. Are there any schedule or council requests or the comments?
I had a scheduling thing. I had sent it to Celeste, which I think she sent it out to staff. I wanted to make sure people knew that the Coalition for Smarter Growth is coming back to Falls Church. I think it's September 21st, so this coming weekend, they're touring cottages. The starting point, I think, was at the George Mason High School parking lot. So I imagine they're taking Shreve to the bike path up. So probably a good opportunity for Fairfax County neighbors to be aware, too, especially as they've talked about walkability concerns. So if they do have a big group, I think it'd be good, again, good press for the city now that cottages is winning awards and receiving lots of positive accolades everywhere. But I assume that they would be welcoming for council or anyone else on staff to join in. They're a good group.
All right, anything else? Mr. Duncan?
So Mr. Shields, thank you for your email this afternoon. So the things we're waiting to hear from about scheduling or Howard-Hearn Stream, no, sorry, Larry Graves Turf Field ribbon cutting date?
Yes. So there's been a date circulated, I think, for Saturday, October 5th, but that is the day before you leave for Virginia Municipal League?
That's a good day.
So the question is whether that date suits. But that's when the Fairfax County Park Authority thought we might do it.
That would be, unless you go early.
So is there a possibility of?
That would be a good day. There's something else going on that day, but I'll talk to you. And Howard-Hearn Stream Valley Park also might have its work finished around that time.
Yeah, by the end of September. So we could do both.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I was wondering. And finally, to hit for the, not hit for the, like, the third one would be, are we doing anything with fellows before you're in? Commemorate the official handover?
We should. I'll follow up with you on how to do that and when.
Okay. Oh, I was going to bring some chickens, actually, and get them set up there, because I knew you would like that.
Anything else?
I do have just one thing. Mr. Duncan, if I could talk with you and Ms. Hardy about PDC meeting, we have a conflict that has popped up, but I'll follow up with you offline on that. That's the Thursday, the 26th.
A move that we adjourn.
Thank you, council.
Thanks for coming out, everyone.